Good evening and welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Chelsea Fuller. I'm going to be one of the co-moderators tonight. With me is Sidney Scarborough and she's going to be the other moderator as well. Just to go over some housekeeping, we're going to go ahead and go over the format of tonight's forum. There will be two moderators, one who is going to present questions to candidates while the other will keep track of time limits. Sidney will be calling for 10-second marks and she will also be moderating crowd questions. Each candidate will have an equal amount of time to answer questions presented by the moderator. Times will depend on the complexity of the question. All predetermined questions will be presented with a predetermined timeframe for the answer and will be given to the candidates prior to the forum. You both had the opportunity to go over the questions in advance, correct?
Yes.
Facebook Live questions and audience questions will be allowed. The question needs to be presented in 10 seconds or less and in a respectable way by any audience members. This is to keep the audience commentary to questions only. Backstory and arguments will not be accepted. When an audience member poses a question, it will be directed toward Sidney, who will then make sure that it is phrased correctly before repeating it to the corresponding candidate. The candidate will then have one minute to answer unless the first moderator allows more time based off candidate request. Moderators will have the ability to pick and choose Facebook Live questions based on time and relativity to the forum. Moderators also hold the ability to turn down an audience member's questions if it does not align with the school board politics and is personal in nature. This forum is being held so that voters may meet and get to know their school board candidates as well as to help aid them in their civic responsibility to vote for the candidate that best represents them. Respect, integrity, and professionalism will be observed by everyone who participates. First, we are going to go ahead and allow the candidates to have two minutes to introduce themselves. Tonight, we have Michelle Criswell representing, I'm sorry, running for District 6. And we have Rick Topright, who is in District 3. Michelle, I'm going to allow you to go first. And when we have 10 seconds left, Sidney is going to, instead of announcing the 10 seconds, she's going to go ahead and tap on the desk, so be mindful of that as your mark. Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Stewart County Streaming for hosting this event tonight. Thank you to the Kaiser Family Kitchen for providing refreshments. Thank you, everyone, for being here and those watching online. I am Michelle Criswell and I am a candidate for school board seat in District 6. Our family moved to Stewart County in 2020. My husband and I have two grown boys and our daughter is a freshman at the high school here. My background is in business and management and I have more than 20 years of public service.
Thank you, Ms. Criswell. Mr. Right, two minutes.
I'm a retired infantry first sergeant with over 21 years of service in the Army. I did a tour in Desert Shield, Desert Storm with 101st. I spent six months down in Haiti with the 25th Infantry Division. I also taught three years of college ROTC. And during that time, I achieved an associate degree in law enforcement. When I retired, I moved back to the same area in Joplin, Missouri. Started my new career and I finished up and got my bachelor's degree in criminal justice. My second career was teaching junior ROTC in high schools. I taught in Missouri and Oklahoma. As a school teacher for 20 years, I dealt with school boards, superintendents or directors, faculty members, administrators, secretaries, cooks, custodians, bus drivers, but more importantly, students and their parents. I'm a lifetime member of the VFW, AMVETS, DAV. I'm a paid-up-for-life member of the American Legion. I'm also the American Legion Rider Director for Dover Chapter 72. I have just recently stepped down as the Department American Legion Rider Director for the whole state of Tennessee. I'm also on the Stewart County Senior Citizen Board and Holiday Shores Homeowners Association.
Thank you, Mr. Right. All right, we are going to go ahead and go into the questions. I will read the question first and I will tell you how many minutes you have for each question. It was decided beforehand between Ms. Criswell and Mr. Right. Ms. Criswell will answer the questions first and then upon answering each question, we'll go back to, we'll go to Mr. Rick to answer. Michelle, question one: Why are you running for the Board of Education? And if elected, what will be your priorities? You have two minutes and Sidney will tap for your 10-second warning.
Thank you. As a parent and community member, I have observed a disconnect between community members and our school system. Our community as a whole must be part of the process, the process of improving how we do things and part of the process of building a better connection between all of us. Every student should be prepared to lead a successful and fulfilling life and receive the best possible education and resources to decide what they want to pursue, whether it's going to college or learning a trade, enlisting in the military, or going straight into the workforce. When we provide our students with the tools they need to be successful in whatever path they choose, we are preparing them for adulthood and life after high school. A couple of the things that I would like to see in Stewart County: internships or part-time employment with local businesses or even with our government offices at the courthouse. My senior year, I went to school half the day and went to work the other half and I earned credits for working, so I think that could be something that we could do here. Real-world experience offers insight to our students to make more informed decisions. Ensuring we are building a pathway between education and careers once our students have graduated from high school is paramount. All residents in Stewart County deserve to know what is going on within our school system, how decisions are being made and how their tax dollars are being spent. I've heard these statements a couple times saying, "We are meeting the requirements of the state" or "We are meeting expectations," which is really great, I think that's amazing. But I think that we should always strive to exceed expectations. To exceed the requirements of the state should always be our goal. Working for just enough is not enough.
Thank you. Mr. Right, same question: Why are you running for the Board of Education? If elected, what will be your priorities? And you have two minutes as well.
Our school system has issues, too many issues and I think they're mediocre grades from the state. We need to do the right things for the right reasons for the right people, including students, parents, teachers, and the community. We need to set an obtainable goal and work towards achieving that goal. And we're not, I don't think we're getting there right now. We're not doing the right things right now. And I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Second question, Ms. Criswell: In your words, how does the role of a school board official differ from the role of the Director of Administration? One minute.
So as a school board member, I would need to be familiar with the education laws, rules, and regulations of the Tennessee Board of Education and the Tennessee Department of Education. I will be mandated to participate in state board training so I can learn the job as a school board member. I need to know the general goals and objectives of the Stewart County school system. I always need to work as a team with my co-board members. That's very important. And always remain impartial when voting and make sure it's in the best interest of all of our students. Supporting voting outcomes by the board, even if it goes against maybe something that I voted for, is important because the majority wins. One thing I think is very important is representing the school board and the school system in a professional manner. The Director of Schools hires and evaluates school system employees and ensures all schools run efficiently.
Mr. Right, in your words, how does the role of a school board official differ from the role of Director of Administration? One minute.
Hold them accountable for their actions or inactions. They know the system better than most. We need to learn from them, but at the end of the day, we need to trust but verify so we know we're doing the right things for our kids.
Thank you. Question three: Ms. Criswell, what is the best way to address differences of opinion in the board or between the board and the administration? One minute.
I think it's important to understand that each board member represents a different district and holds different points of view. To be effective, board members must not be afraid to stand up for what they believe in because that's why they ran for the school board in the first place. Working together towards the same goals and objectives, remain respectful, patient, and open-minded. Allow everyone to speak their mind, remain open to constructive feedback and work together as a team. Active listening, I think, is very important to understand an individual's concern rather than listening only to respond. I think our discussions will go a lot better if we are practicing active listening. My final thing on this is that I can disagree with someone and remain respectful and professional at the same time.
Thank you. Mr. Right, what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration? One minute.
Approach these situations with a level head and use kindness. Kindness irritates people with an agenda. Arguing and being in the mean spirit, it doesn't work, nobody wins.
Ms. Criswell, question four: How would you measure the success of a Director of Education? One minute.
I believe that an assessment of the Director is an ongoing process, not just a once-a-year review and evaluation. Things that I would consider an evaluation, these are the questions I would ask: Has overall performance improved since the last evaluation? Are the goals, objectives, and performance standards of each school being met? What opportunities has the Director taken advantage of for continuous improvement such as professional development opportunities? Is the Director open to constructive feedback? Is our community being heard on a consistent basis? The evaluation should always be linked to academic, social, and emotional growth of all students. Periodic self-evaluations are important as well, but I also think that not only board members should contribute to the evaluation, I think all school, staff members, parents, and students, and as well as the community should also have input in his evaluation.
Mr. Right, how would you measure the success of a Director of Education? One minute.
Obviously test scores and graduation rates, but not just for the money. Every child sitting in the seat is money. We all understand that. But are they truly learning anything? Are our kids ready to go out and meet the world? The number of issues, major issues, and how they're handled, are policies being followed, knowing what the Director's policies are?
Thank you. Question five, Ms. Criswell: What do you see as the major issues facing your school district and public education in general? Three minutes.
One issue, I think, is special education, but I will address that in question number eight. Parents and other community members do not feel they are being heard when they bring issues or concerns forward. Bullying seems to be an ongoing issue for a number of students and the lack of information regarding building upgrades is also a concern. And I think these concerns are playing into the reason why so many kids are being homeschooled in Stewart County. I've been told by a couple people that we have more than 100 students being homeschooled right now and those are the two main concerns. The way I look at this is that when issues are brought forward, we need to use those as an incentive to do better and not get upset when people bring these to your table. We need to listen to our parents, really listen to their concerns and not dismiss them or treat them as less than. I homeschooled my daughter for a year prior to moving to Stewart County and it was not an easy decision. It's not easy for someone who has no background in teaching, believe me, so they do not make this decision lightly. Whether our students attend public school or are homeschooled, we want them to maximize their learning potential, so we need to take everyone's feelings into consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Right, what do you see as the major issues facing your school district and public education in general? Three minutes.
Health issues at North Stewart Elementary. The conditions of buildings, saying a building is 50 years old does not excuse the lack of maintenance or upkeep. If you owned a home for 25, 30 years, you would maintain it and repair it to keep your family safe. Again, mediocre state, test scores, not listening, maybe even to a point unapproachable. At the rate things are going between homeschooling and possible school shutdowns, public schools may have to compete for dollars to operate. They may no longer have a monopoly on taxpayers' money. Communication is another problem we have and one of the ways I want to fix that, because I know how school boards go, they have so much time, can't ask questions, don't expect a response. Hold a town hall-type meeting. Let people come in, voice their opinions or concerns about our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Right. Question six, Ms. Criswell: How would you determine your budget priorities? Two minutes.
I think budget priorities must be deliberate and strategic and I think the goals for student achievement should drive the budget process. Priority decisions should be based on total value created for all students across the board, whether they are in advanced classes or special needs programs and everything in between. We need to identify the needs, priorities, and goals of each school and each program. Track and evaluate how and where funds are currently allocated by looking at the prior year's budget or several years back. We should examine historical patterns of spending and evaluate if past spending has a significant return on investment. If we're not getting what we're paying for, we need to make adjustments. If there are gaps, if gaps are found between our objectives and our current standings, budget season is the best time to determine the underlying cause of the deficiency. One question I ask myself and I ask the public: Should we or are we opening up budget priority discussions with other school staff members and the public?
If you have more to say on that, you can go ahead and say, I called it on one-minute mark instead of two.
No, that was right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Right, how would you determine your budget priorities? Two minutes.
We must have the latest updated technology. If we fall behind the rest of the world, then our students start out their new journey trailing behind. General education, everything else is there to support education. Having a good football team, softball team, or any other activity is great, but it shouldn't come before education. I taught in a school system that the superintendent was overheard saying, "As long as the football team wins, I got a job." That's the wrong attitude.
Thank you. Question seven, and this is a two-part question. Ms. Criswell, what is the role of schools in teaching children about challenging topics such as sex ed, cyber safety, drugs, wellness, bullying? And are there any topics you think should be added to the curriculum? Three minutes.
So I think all of these topics are okay to be taught in school, but I think it also requires a thoughtful groundwork and respectful participation. Parents need to be informed of any of this teaching in the school and they need to be part of the decision-making process. They need to have the option to opt out, their children, of participating. That makes them part of the processes. I go back again, parents need to be heard. Something to be added to the curriculum, one idea I had was a wellness program for students and staff members. Initiatives designed to promote physical, mental, and emotional wellbeing, physical activity, nutrition education, mental health support, health screen needs, and substance abuse prevention. Just a few of the benefits from a wellness program are improved academic performance, enhanced mental health, reduced absenteeism, promotion of lifelong healthy habits, and a positive school environment.
Thank you. Mr. Right, what is the role of schools in teaching children about challenging topics such as sex ed, cyber safety, drugs, wellness, and bullying? And are there any topics you think that should be added to the curriculum? Three minutes.
I believe sex education is good to be taught in schools. In my opinion, LGBTQ should not be taught in K through 12 schools. While teaching ROTC at a college, I talked to students in their junior year that didn't know what they wanted to do after graduation. What some people want, some people want to bring up this to children. Most brains don't reach full maturation until 23 to 25 years old. Cyber safety is more important than many people realize. Identity theft and child trafficking, just to name a couple reasons. Fentanyl is a super powerful drug that is killing not only drug users but innocent people as well. Think about the next dollar bill you see laying on the ground, folding money. Bills of denominations up to $20 or more may very well have small traces of fentanyl on it. That can be dangerous and even deadly. As far as bullying goes, I don't believe you will ever stop it completely. I wouldn't stop trying, but it's been around a long time and it doesn't seem to be going away. What we can and should be doing is looking after the victims better. Most victims aren't coming to teachers with false stories. They deserve to be checked out and let the SRO know of the situation and continue to monitor. If I was going to add a program, and I'm biased on this, I would add junior ROTC to this high school.
Thank you. Question eight, Ms. Criswell: What are your thoughts on the district's programs for special education students, which includes English language learners and gifted students? Two minutes.
So these numbers, I received these from a couple different people. There are approximately 15% of students enrolled in our school system that receive special education services, with eight to nine who are considered gifted students. So yes, I did the math and it's approximately 300 students that receive speech therapy, academic services, or occupational therapy, or all of them or one of them. To receive these programs, they must be eligible for an IEP. And right now, it's my understanding that we only have one individual who conducts these evaluations that works in the school system. The general education budget benefits all students and special education students are general education students first. So we need to make sure that although they are benefiting from the general education budget, we need to make sure that their own budget is allocated correctly and there's enough funds in there to treat their extra needs that they have. We also need to give more support to our, for our teachers, which ultimately gives more support to our students. I know right now, we're looking at hiring an additional speech teacher, which is a great thing. Areas of opportunity, I would love to look at organizations that provide free-of-charge advocate services to support our parents and provide more training opportunities for staff members as it relates to our children within special education. One last thing I would love to see is more trauma-informed training for our educators to teach them how to identify signs of trauma, which could be abuse, neglect, a number of things, and provide an environment that does not re-trigger or re-traumatize a child.
Thank you. Mr. Right, what are your thoughts on the district's programs for special education that includes English language learners and gifted students? Two minutes.
I have a soft spot in my heart for special needs kids. I worked with many during my time as a teacher. I have sat on many IEPs in the past. When my wife and I went to what we were told was an IEP here in the high school, it was nothing like what I've observed in the past. English language learners, I have mixed emotions on this. While I never discriminated against any of my ELL students, I understand the taxpayers' concern for spending our tax dollars on this program. In 2020, we had nearly 5 million ELL students in this country, according to Statista.com. I would expect those numbers to be much higher today. Academically gifted students can sometimes lack other social skills. Think of Sheldon Cooper from The Big Bang Theory. Very smart, not very many social skills. Others are sometimes considered twice exception. That includes people like Einstein, Van Gogh, Agatha Christie, and Winston Churchill. They fall into this category. Some people see the world a whole lot different than the average person. Sometimes it takes considerable measures to keep those people engaged and challenged.
Thank you. Question nine, Ms. Criswell: What can school boards do to better support the teachers with their needs? Two minutes.
So I spoke to a few teachers in our district and the main, the main thing that I was told is that they would like to give more input to the board on things that are going on in the school district. The teachers that I spoke with feel that board members do not understand the true heartbeat of the faculty. They want to be asked about their needs and brought into discussions more often. They want to be involved in the decision-making process and allowed to exercise their professional judgment. All Stewart County school system employees want to be heard. Teachers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, everyone who supports and works for our school system. When we promote and support open communication in the workplace for our school employees, we are supporting not only their success but our students' success as well.
Thank you. Mr. Right, how can school boards better support teachers in their needs? Two minutes.
Listen to their concerns, talk to them, visit classrooms during the school day, look and listen. I plan to visit schools and classrooms as a school board member. In my military time and as a school teacher, we've been told we got dignitaries, we got school board members coming, and it turned into one great big dog and pony show. They got to see what the leaders in charge wanted them to see. I want to show up at a school, walk into a classroom and observe, talk to the teachers, find out what they want, what they need, and do what we can to help them out.
Thank you. Question 10, Ms. Criswell: What role should the community play in supporting the education of children? Two minutes.
I think everyone in our community needs to support the education in Stewart County because we all benefit from it when our students are well-educated and their social skills, everything. So parents, grandparents, relatives, caregivers, businesses, organizations, everyone should be involved. When everyone works as a team, we create a solid safety net for our children. I'd like to see participation in open house events and teacher conferences increase. I know they're not required right now. They used to be, but they're not right now, so I think that could be something that we could look at. I think these relationships provide a lot of resources for our schools, such as school supplies and food pantries. I know right now, one way some, if the public would want to participate, is the robotics camp is looking for sponsors. They're trying to make it free for all students and that's one way that everyone can get involved by donating to that. When we start hearing our parents and others in the community, this will lead to more support from and involvement in the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Right, what role should the community play in supporting the education of children? Two minutes.
Urge people in the community to get involved, not just parents, grandparents, guardians. I'm not talking about just during sporting events. I'm talking about all year long. Let's look at something like, let's adopt a teacher, a classroom, an entire class, or a program. We all know these teachers could use some help. It takes a village to raise a child. Let's start raising these children the right way.
Thank you. Final question, Ms. Criswell: How do you plan to measure the success of the school system each year? system each year? Two minutes.
So I think there's a number of metrics that we can use to measure the success. Obviously, we would look at student performance, their assessments and grades. We need to look at graduation rates, dropout rates, grade level advancement, from one grade to another, elementary school to middle school to high school. Rates of suspension, student and staff attendance, retention of staff, participation in professional development, parent engagement, and partnerships with community members. Just like the Director's assessment, it is ongoing. I think we should do quarterly progress reviews, regular contact between the school board and all schools, identify barriers in meeting goals and objectives. I think it's very important to collect feedback through staff, parent, and student surveys, and make adjustments when and where needed. As a board member, I would like to visit each school and classroom and ask questions, meeting one-on-one with our educators.
Thank you. And final question, Mr. Wright. How do you plan to measure the success of the school system each year? Two minutes.
Have we raised the bar for the state grading system? Did we achieve it? Are we graduating smarter students or just more students? Are our schools safe from intruders, from hazards within the walls? Are we taking care of students, parents, teachers, and staff?
Thank you. That concludes the questions that we came up with already. So I'm gonna go ahead and provide each of you the opportunity to go ahead and give a closing statement. Each of you will have two minutes, starting with Ms. Criswell.
So again, I'd like to thank Stewart County Streaming for hosting this event tonight. I'm open to questions and contacts by the public through Facebook. I'll answer any questions that you have between now and August 1st. And thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to earning your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, two minutes.
What I'm about to say is what I would say to my colleagues, my peers on the school board if I make it to that seat. The first thing I want you to know is that I'm not here to make friends. The second thing I want you to know is I'm not here to make enemies. I'm here to work together, to do the right things for the right people for the right reasons. We gotta do this together. I can work with people as long as they're willing to listen. I'm not afraid to tell people when I think they're wrong. I made a career out of that. It's, I'm gonna do what I think is right for the students, for the parents, for the teachers, for the people in this community.
Thank you. And Ms. Scarborough, do you have any questions from the audience or any live questions?
Well, do we have any audience members then?
I do actually have a question. What are your thoughts on adding arts and theater programs to the middle school? They don't have anything but a band.
Okay, so the question is art programs?
Arts and theater to the middle school.
I think it would be amazing. The younger that we start our students in arts, in any kind of art program is great. My daughter started drama this year. I know she would have been in it in middle school if it had been available. So yes, I fully support that.
Mr. Wright?
I support it as well. I was in several plays when I was in high school. We didn't have it down in the middle school or junior high where I came from. That would have been nice, but I support it. The fine arts is something that we need. The college level's a different story in my opinion, but I think kids need to have a broader understanding of what's going on out there in our world.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay, the only other question that we've gotten is I don't have any really. The only one that came in was, do you have any familiarity with trauma-informed education?
I know it's out there. There's agencies that can provide training to the schools. I don't have those names right in front of me though. I've got the state, I know the state of Tennessee through DCS does support trauma-informed training for their employees, so I'm sure we could find something that we could offer to our educators here in Stewart County.
Okay, and Mr. Wright?
As an infantry first sergeant, we dealt with trauma. I had to go through actual trauma training a few years ago, if that long, when we took on two foster teenagers. We had to go through a series of classes, including trauma, what apps they should have on their phone, what's safe, what's not safe, stuff like that. So it's better to be prepared for stuff when it comes around.
Okay. There's no more on the live, so if you'd like to close out, we're good.
All right, well then that concludes the Stewart County School Board Candidate Forum. Stewart County Streaming would like to thank our candidates for coming out tonight and participating in the forum. I do want to remind our audience as well too that we will be having the primary voting on Tuesday, March 5th, and we encourage everyone to go ahead and go out and do that. The winner of District 3 primary will continue on to the county elections August 1st. So again, we encourage everyone to go out and make your vote count. Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Criswell for District 6, and Mr. Wright for District 3. Thank you.
Before we close out, I'm sorry, I just had one question come in on the live, so I'm just gonna go ahead and ask that real quick. It says, "Do you agree that we are in compliance with many open states fed violation investigations, and how can you change this?"
Ms. Criswell?
I don't know the specifics on those, so until I'm actually on the school board where I can actually look at those, I really can't answer that.
Okay. And Mr. Wright?
Same. Without knowing the specifics and knowing what's being done, it's hard to answer that question.
Okay. All right, that was it. I just wanted to make sure that question got asked because it got brought in just last second, so.
Okay.
Well, everybody have a good night.
Happy case, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.